All right, I'll call the needs of order. And then take role or have a little call of the planning commission. So Commissioner is given.
Present.
Commissioner Bogers.
Present.
Commissioner Mo.
Present.
Commissioner White.
Present.
And I am also present, Steve, the Commissioner Matt Martin, vice chair. Um, Commissioners Teal and Pereira are absent and excused. So agenda item number two is the opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. This is the opportunity for the public to comment. Each person who wants to speak can speak for three minutes. Do you have members of the public who want to speak?
Michael Thomas.
Okay, Michael, you have three minutes. Please send us your address.
Sure, uh, thank you, Planning Commission, Mike Thomas, twelve thirty-one La Forest Drive, S E. Again, I wish to thank all members of the Planning Commission for their service. I know these are volunteer positions and unpaid, so uh, and I do appreciate it. And I have long participated in uh, in uh, planning commission. Not as much as of late, but perhaps it may change as well as uh, city council. Um, I did email you um, a suggestion for future meetings. The audio is very poor in that room. Um, I would suggest one of two things uh, for future meetings. One, the uh, the city council public meeting hall has certainly far better audio and video. Um, that might be option one. The second option might be a purchase of um, a uh, more of a speakerphone type adjunct to use. Uh, I suspect you're using probably a PC at the end of the room. Uh, there's also some other devices you can build by that have like video cameras that swing around to the speaker. But um, I would hope that uh, perhaps in future meetings, y'all could address the audio quality. It's very difficult to hear speakers, um, given the likely that that's a PC in the room using its microphone. Um, that's all my comment, uh, you know, for tonight. And again, uh, thank you for, thank you for your uh, attention. And I'm hoping that perhaps staff or city can perhaps address it with uh, better, better equipment. Thank you.
Let me finish for Thomas. Anybody? Okay, great. We'll close the agenda item number two and agenda item number three, approval of minutes. So the approval of minutes from the August seventh, two thousand twenty-four planning commission meeting. Do any commissioners have comments, clarifications, adjustments to minutes?
Motion to approve.
I do have one. I think this was spelled. Okay, so it's on the second page.
Okay.
Okay, if in the case.
Oh, the Ts.
Yeah.
Oh, two Ts.
Yeah.
It's good, okay.
Right. And do you have a motion to approve? Sam White, uh, motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, like Commissioner Mo. We have a motion from Sam White and a second from Commissioner Mo. Uh, any discussion? Right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is passed by an actual vote of five to nothing. And we will now go to agenda item number four, the emergency shelters, public hearing. This is the amendment to the emergency shelters North Bend municipal code. So can we please have a staff?
All right, well, I'm trying to do um, actually on the minutes page. Um, so yeah, we have some municipal code amendments for you. Um, the reason is that the definition of uh, emergency shelters and emergency housing were, were changed. And so that was um, the first step that we made was on the definitions. Um, but we had some code that needed to be clarified. So where we allow those um, is that needs to be in zones where hotels are also allowed. So what we did was looked at the chart. Um, we had a number of conditional use permits, the C U Ps. Um, and again, by state law, where we allow hotels, we need to allow these uses. Um, and so we clarified the code um, on changing C U Ps to either not allow or hotels are not allowed in those zones like an H D R or an N B. And then where hotels are allowed, um, it's outright permitted. Um, we do have some performance standards. And um, believe they actually exactly repeat, but we kept them called out separately just in case. Um, things change and little tweaks can uh, occur in the future. But um, there um.
It's yeah, basically updates based on the direction from Commerce. We are bringing up data from twenty twenty-one based on the legislation. Was based on our interpretation with legal. Um, and then these updates are based on the direction that was actually published. I think that we didn't have at the time we, when we officially updated.
So you cannot exceed density for the underlying zoning designation. You cannot exceed occupancy more than a million. Pretty generic, but pretty broad then. Um, and then the other one, what was the other performance standard? Below, um.
Yeah, security and operation. And that, that didn't change, so that's all the same.
That was, yeah, just moved down.
Yeah, so those are all the same. The only thing the difference, no conditional use permit and um. Now that's.
Mm-hmm.
Changed the uses.
Yeah, any questions or do we want to open the public hearing first? Uh, what the thing that we say is the commission, commissioners have any questions?
Very cheerful.
We talked about.
Yes, I see.
Okay.
Yeah, we should, we saw this.
Yeah, I think it's good.
We saw this previously nowadays.
All right. Um, the public hearing is now, sorry. Did I miss something?
No.
Okay. The public hearing is now opened at six twenty-seven P M, I believe.
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, thirty-seven, excuse me. Um, clocks are. Um, do we have any members of the public present to speak? And if not, do you have any members of the public online who wish to speak? Okay. The public hearing is then closed at six thirty-eight P M. Um, opportunity for further questions from the commissioners. Do you have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the amendments to the emergency shelter in North Bend municipal town. Uh, made by Commissioner White, I believe. Any seconds?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mo, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Vote passed by a vote of five to zero, no one opposing. We now move to agenda item number five, A D U amendments to public, a public hearing. Amendments to the accessory dwelling units, amendments to the North Bend municipal code. Can we please have the staff?
Uh, these amendments are the same as last time. It's uh, made by the state that we increased the number of minimum U's up to two. There are those square footage and square, but that is where we increased some of the smaller things. Um, uh, since time around, we have the non-able use. This is a. Something in your history.
Good question. Um, if all the changes then at least, when we have these work fee, to me that means it has to be. Is it at least or is it with a max of?
We have to, we can, we can allow a twelve hundred square foot if we, if the city's regulation, if you guys wanted to allow larger U's.
Yeah.
But our smart regulation is at eight hundred, so we did up to the minimum the state requires, which is a thousand.
Yeah, so it's like if someone wanted to build a seven. So we still can, but it's.
Yes. The city can't per. Hit it.
Yeah.
Under a thousand.
It is where like.
Our regulation can't be less than a thousand.
Got it.
We can't say you can only go big hundred if you have those a thousand.
Okay. Okay, right, and I was like, oh, it has to be a thousand. Some people, but I see what you're saying if they were constantly, it's five hundred. Right, okay.
I'm gonna think. I didn't know you did receive public comment via email.
Yes. Did we receive public comment through email to the commission? Do you have any other questions from the commissioners?
I mean, one of the things I, I brought up last time was uh, the subject sewer thing. So I do, I mean, I know that the county is responsible for reviewing uh, the accuracy of subjecting stuff for U's. Um, and obviously the city would love for sewer to be in line with that, if it makes sense. Um, I, I just, I still don't see this, so maybe it's like any other uh, portion of the municipal code that uh, maybe I'm just like, I haven't revisited, but it would be nice to just kind of see like, you know, what is the goal, like, you know, for, for the city? Like, is it like up to the, the property owner to have those conversations to the county if they are on the subject? Um, like, it would be nice to see that kind of spelled out, so we don't need to, yeah. Uh, cause right now it looks like everybody knows, just this great opportunity and we started to get to it, uh, it may not actually be. Yeah, that's my, that's my one comment.
So I can tell you, I just pulled up the sewer regulation. It says connection to public sewer require exceptions. It says the newer, the owner of all new houses, buildings or properties, so buildings, used for human occupancy, employment, recreation or other purpose is required at his rehearsal. So cost or expense to connect toilet, wastewater facilities herein directly with the proper public sewer prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Or in the case of residential subdivisions prior to final flat or final subdivision, flat approval. And then there's exceptions, so we have a whole.
Yeah, yeah.
Code referencing and so.
So this is now, so this is considered like in other property in that terminology?
A building, a building for new occupancy.
Then that includes that, okay, so.
So. Yeah, so I think we can cover it under the sewer code. It, it doesn't get to the public works director, maybe any interpretations.
Okay, so that is why I said maybe I'm going to spell it out here.
In the A D exception, that's correct.
Awesome.
So section G of the A D U table here exhibit B says that the A D U shall be non-building, electrical, fire, plumbing, plumbing design standard. So does plumbing not include sewer then? Do, is that what we're saying?
That's just saying it has to be building standards or building code.
So. Okay. But the sewer is separately handled by, you know, you never.
That's just saying whether it has to be connected to.
Sewer.
If it's exempt from connecting to sewer, if it's over a hundred fifty feet from a sewer. And what the septic requirements would be, that's all covered under a different section of code. But it still has to be plumbing code, even if it's one way or the other.
Um, for the public comment we received, um, was very verbiage.
If we move to public comment, let's actually have the public hearing.
Yeah, so.
So let's, let's take the questions and then go to public comment, uh, the public hears.
The public hearing is now open at six thirty, six forty-two, sorry. Six forty-two P M. Do we have any, anybody present or online who wishes to speak?
Yes, Michael Thomas.
Maybe commissioners, can, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, hey, I was having some minor audio difficulty, I wasn't certain if you passed on. Michael Thomas, uh, twelve thirty-one, La Forest Drive, S E. I would appreciate uh, perhaps an additional minute, given that you're also taking D N S comment that was published. But I'll keep my comments uh, relatively brief and this is in line with what I said last time. Um, I'm concerned about some of the wording around the A D U height restrictions as written. Um, seems to imply that the change may be up to twenty-five feet taller than the primary dwelling. I think this is really out of character with many of the neighborhoods. Um, I would suggest that A D U height must be no taller than the primary dwelling. Um, and I'm concerned, concerned about the height restrictions. Um, I have a couple of comments, um, uh, and I'll make my D N S ones at the end. Um, but the second one was um, I'm concerned about really lack of comprehensive studies on like traffic and its intersection with public safety response time. Um, for the cumulative effects of adding E D, A D U's. Uh, no doubt, you know, adding, you know, one or two, you know, is not going to be a major impact to traffic. But um, you know, this has potential to open the floodgates for a lot more A D U's. So I'm concerned about that. Um, where I'm headed with also, I had an O S S concern as an O S S owner. Um, it's not sufficient simply for me as a person, let's say, adding an A D U to get my O S S permitted to add that A D U. If I have a neighbor that is adding an A D U, whether on O S S or septic, I'm very concerned about impacts to the water table. There are notorious examples of this in the city and others where septics have been inundated through improper development. Um, I would, I would request that um, adjacent uh, property owners or nearby property owners with O S S be notified um, in this case, as well as King County Deeper. Um, where O S S in proximity also to be notified through the correct O S S review. It's insufficient that North Bend simply adopted King County Stormwater Code, which is where much of this comes from. I'd also encourage that King County Deeper review stormwater for impacts to O S S. Very troubling by lack of anything to protect O S S owners from A D U's being added in proximity. And this leads to really another point, which is a D N S impact. Um, I was disturbed by the responses of staff last time. Uh, that um, really what I see happening is um, is there's lack of a cumulative impact review for A D U's. Again, um, adding one or two of these is not within a threshold of any, of any one threshold determination. But collectively, these things have impacts to many areas, and I'm not going to list them all. But um, I feel an E A S is appropriate before passing this on for approval. And this really led to the questions I was asking for leave of commission as staff. Like, for example, does staff really believe that one or two A D U's are going to meet the threshold for a C P A determination? It seems to me can escape review. How many A D U's exist within the city? And how many additional A D U's are expected in reasonable timeframes? And has the city determined what's the incremental water and sewer impacts? And if so, what, what are they? And I really would ask that folks would withhold A D U approval changes. There was one other comment I did want to make. Um, I heard discussion around O S S. Um, I don't believe O S S would be forbidden uh, for A D U's provided the county will permit them. Maybe quite challenging though, unless you have a very large lot, uh, you know, to permit, you know, an A D U or two. And A, and O S S restrictions are becoming more restrictive over time. I'm very familiar with some of this stuff and uh, certainly I think there may be interest in uh, in folks, you know, adding A D U's with O S S, but that is uh, quite complex. And of course, as staff mentioned, there are current requirements, you know, which, which uh, may require, you know, sewer conversion, et cetera. And those are being actually revisited at the county and state level. So, but uh, then when I get, give some call to that. So, you know, the code, the O S S code is my understanding, doesn't forbid um, A D U's with O S S, it's simply how your O S S has to support it. So anyway, this, this concludes my comment. And I do appreciate, and I would appreciate, you know, staff, you know, asking a few que, uh, the commission to ask a few questions, staff, particularly around thresholds of individual A D U's, the number of A D U's in the city, and then how many are we expecting? And I'm just very concerned that collectively we're missing something as to reviewing the impact of these, whether it's environmental, traffic, and uh, that there's really going to be no opportunity to collectively examine this really without an E A S and without things like traffic studies. Again, thank you for your, your time and, and your efforts. This concludes my comments.
Thank you, and Thomas for your comments. Um, anybody else who wishes to speak? Here. The public hearing is opened at eight. Three seven, six forty-eight, I will get this straight, so, so sorry, different times, yes. Six forty-eight P M. Um, now is an opportunity for commissioners to ask questions again. Any questions about the information that's been presented here?
Um, another question, but um, we did went on the, the A D U height last week. Uh, and it was determined that the twenty-five is the maximum. It's not an addition to.
Right.
So I did want to call it up, so. All specification, um, and make sure that the public heard that. Uh, and then O S S. Doesn't know, it's honestly, so it's like, it's a. It's what, that was really significant. That's right.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, uh, in regards to the, the, the A D U height, I, I, I agree. I think the verbiage could be more clear in that section, eighteen, uh, you know, so not exceed twenty feet, twenty-five foot and just end it there.
Okay.
Alternatively, I mean, there's also this judgment by Mr. Thomas that the A D U should also not exceed the site, uh, the site, the height of that primary residence. Uh, is that something? How do people feel about that? If someone has a one-story house and they build a two-story A D U, uh, does that, is that detrimental to the character of the neighborhood or?
I, I think that's very challenging, because in, in, in this case, um, what the state and the county and the cities are hoping is you can build a detached garage with people on top. So if you have a one, or one-story house, now you're limiting the possibility of what to do with this for footage. Uh, and I, I, I don't think that's a, you know, we're looking at a lot more just fragile comments from people. I respond again, but.
So the, so yeah, my special concern is that the ground value, uh, limiting from the thousand square foot. And if you don't have the footage, you're both out of square, why? So you've got a code that says you can't go more than a story, or you're limiting the A D U. So, so yeah, I guess I would just change that, we're due to twenty, twenty-five feet.
Yeah, I think we should make it very clear, so that we don't.
Let's check my own amount, page eighteen of the.
Yeah, page eighteen, um, G.
Five, five, four.
G four says detached A D U's shall not exceed twenty-five feet in height.
You could do it to the highest point of the structure, and I think that's where you would.
Why is it?
Yeah, we have definition of how to measure height already on there. Okay. They are quoting another section, so.
Actually, and that will limit it more than it's the, it's the average of the pitch. Um, typically thirty-five feet is the typical average of the pitch. This is saying the highest point, twenty-five, so you're actually going to see more like twenty-two, twenty-three, and then that little bit that goes.
So yeah, so it's, sorry, I think it's detached, yeah. Detached A D U's shall not exceed twenty-five feet in height to the highest point of the structure. I don't, yeah, is there something clear?
No, I think, I think you'll continue to get questions, but I think your responses will clear that up, I think, where.
If we, if we just said twenty-five feet and then period, you would get twenty-seven to twenty-eight potentially, depending on the pitch.
Yeah.
How about, how about highest point of the structure? Now, it, it limits.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about a detached A D U.
But Mr. Thomas, the point is saying that that could be considered to say twenty-five feet to the highest point of.
On top of the garage.
Yeah, the garage.
Hmm. Like, if the ground is existing fifteen feet, then you've got twenty-five feet more. But that's not.
Yeah.
That's a thirty-five foot.
Yeah.
Yes. So, but yeah, I, what our height says on our, I mean, granted, our definition is usually the midpoint of the slope, but it specifically says from an average of the base elevations.
Yeah.
Of them.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure, I think what would be interesting, I can't remember where it's from, um, like, I'm. It's the north end, so, but um, um, M R S C or something like that. So, um, so they have like a really nice back sheet about what the state legislation is, is doing. It might just be nice to like, link to that somewhere in this section for, to learn more information, to see specifics from what the state is requiring. Cause I mean, I don't, and I don't really know how they, um, what their terminology is, but that would just be nice to see. You know, people get caught up in the language, they, they get into more information, uh, and see where it's coming from.
There is a nice part of our notes when you're talking about, um, and we gotta get it on our website.
As long as that doesn't go state. Which is.
Right.
So that's the thing, that's why you don't, you're not the municipal code, you're gonna be creating a webpage for it and stuff, and so everything.
Put it on our webpage, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Another element I just wanted to comment on, um, in regards to some of the questions by Mr. Thomas was regarding like environmental impact and what the, you know, impact that A D U's are going to be and how many we, uh, potential have in the future. Uh, on the city's housing website, we have the land capacity, um, uh, assessment. And that says that currently North Bend has a potential for a total of one hundred fifty-five A D U's. Um, so I'm just throwing that out there so that people are aware of it, something I think about when I thought someone who reviews this meeting, um, that go read the land capacity assessment.
And we did the analysis of previous permits, we issued less, currently we issue less than one A D U per year. And so we might be double that by, um, two now per lot, we we maybe at one A D U per year. I do expect with a higher size and more that we're going to get possibly a bunch of them. We've seen a lot of people curious, but the new law, but we, we expect that to eventually plateau out. But right now we issue less than one per year of A D U's.
Like realistically, when people start looking at building cost. Uh, figures, more than money.
Yeah.
And I think you probably will see a little uptick, um, because, I mean, it's still, it will be less expensive than home, but you know, we might, we might see four or something, you know, in the next couple of years.
Yeah, I think we'll, yeah, like I said, we'll see an uptick of them, but then I think we'll get down to maybe one per year.
Yeah.
Any other questions from commissioners? All right, do we have a motion to approve? Amendment to the success, to the accessory dwelling units performance standards of N B C M C eighteen dot ten dot zero five O, section one dot five two and associated amendments to N, the M C eighteen dot ten dot zero four one.
I will make a motion to adjourn the accessory dwelling units.
Okay, Commissioner, Mr. Devin, next. Next.
I'm going to finish. I think I repeated it.
I was trying to fix all of that.
Yeah, I know, you did great.
Uh, second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Bogers, second six, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion is approved with no one opposing. We'll move to section for agenda number six, housing element introduction. This is the housing element introduction with the presentation brought in by staff.
Okay, so we've got our, um, first introduction on the housing element. We separated the introductions, but we are proposing to hold the public hearings together. So this meeting, you'll have the housing element introduction. Next meeting, you'll have the land use element and zoning map introduction. And then the following meeting, you'll have a public hearing on both elements together. Um, since they're very closely related, um, obviously in this housing element, we'll talk about some of the zoning changes that you made, but I don't have a zoning map, since that will bring that back with the land use element as well. Um, but as part of this, we've got, you know, proposed amendments that include um, update to our housing and appointment growth targets. Um, really the, the appointment growth targets are more in the land use. Um, we had to update our policies for consistency with the Growth Management Act, um, and the multi-county planning policies, King County, county-wide planning policies, um, updates for our residential growth capacity based on various housing types. Um, our growth targets are now broken down by income brackets, affordable housing updates. Um, we have the discussion about the A D U update requirements, housing capacity analysis and zoning updates, a new section regarding history of discriminatory practices in our housing section and other minor edits and updates. And I'm going to go ahead and open a presentation together here.
Okay, nice, sure, so, um, oh, wait, they got, got.
Yes, I need to make sure it's there by the recording.
So, yeah, as, as you guys know, we've talked about this element previously, some of the, the details and the code amendments that might come out of it. You've seen this before, this is the um, housing needs by income bracket. And so we are required, the, the biggest new thing is that we are required by each future twenty to include um, explicit consideration for capacity for all the different income levels identified. Um, and like Rebecca said, the emergency housing, emergency shelters, permanent supportive housing. So then we went through and just refreshing you, we went through and but plugged in those um, amendments that we're going to see more in the zoning code. And we've shown that we will. And we've shown that we will meet our targets and be able to fill those gaps. And that was your recommendation and council committee has already looked at it. So. It's a combination of reasons, allowable use changes and program changes. And we'll discuss some, most of that further um the next meeting with the landing settlement. So. Um just a a quick, we did throw a zoning map in here if we wanna go back and talk about anything. Um this is just meant to be really a highlight. Also. Um next slide is just a summary of the big picture. What we did with the element, it's showing track changes, um being more packeted. And I think the next round will show a clean version two. Being reviewed by different state agencies right now and we're receiving some comments. Um we did get three uh comment letters, emailed those to you guys. Um so if you have questions, we can talk about those and we will start looking through those as well and. Um you know, respond and add in where there's clarifications or things, um we will do that for the next meeting. So we've cleaned up things, um you know, taken out extra tables and charts that may be outdated, that are referenced in other. Documents of the housing action plan, housing needs assessment. And we've um provided consistency with the G M A. There's new G M A laws and rules. There's new revised King County. Countywide planning, um C P Ts, they're called. Um and like I said, there's language around every median income, A M I, targets. Emergency housing, um. And um. Sounds good for that piece.
And yeah, the um with the sections not specifically holding targets, we had two brand new sections required. And these, those were the ones added in. So even though they're in the red line, they're still black because they're chapter titles, but the the whole section's redlined. So we wanted to call those out as brand new sections in the red line chapter.
Um as far as policy amendment summary, um from what I have, uh we have. Uh eleven policies we're proposing amendments to, eleven existing policies. Um some pretty minor, they seem pretty straightforward. But happy to talk about any of your questions. We have fifteen new policies that are proposed, including a new goal seven that has four policies of its own. And um a common theme that I kinda saw in looking at the amendments are, we're gonna explore a lot of opportunities for. Creating more diverse housing throughout the city. We're gonna provide incentives for affordable housing where we can. Um a lot of that might be seen in the code, in future code amendments. Um or few reductions for affordable housing or something. And then we're going to increase um housing choices, like I said, throughout the city as much as we can. Um to talk about the new goal and policy, um. I give you guys, I don't think I need to necessarily read it all, but I give you guys a minute to to read it and think about it. And that's about all that we have to say. And so. Um can you go through any questions in the element?
So a lot besides the affordable housing and housing choice, a lot about discriminatory practices. Social justice, emergency housing, that's a lot of the themes we saw that were big differences from the two thousand fifteen to the current round.
And a lot of it is pretty prescriptive as far as the county has their policies. We're trying to be consistent in that language. Um. We're not, we're probably not gonna see a lot of huge differences from city to city in some of these areas. Um everybody has the same challenge. It's not, I mean, uh. It's not a city problem. It's that's why we did the original housing needs assessment and everybody's struggling with.
And as was mentioned, we've gotten most of the comments back. We got the tribe. Um we've sat and just got P S R C.
Mm-hmm.
Um the big one that we haven't got is the county. So that that one, from what we've seen from their letters to other cities, could be a pretty. Linky list. So when we get that one back, uh before the, I think we're getting it that way before the public hearing. So, um.
Mm-hmm.
Recommendation, I think, kind of. That is the affordable housing, um council.
The committee, um in Riches, King County. The county council would.
Would review it, yeah.
Comments, um and it's a recommendation. All of, mostly all of these are recommendations. P S R C. This might have a bit more to eat because we want them to certify it or comp plan and then give us, you know, grant money. Um a lot of the other ones are recommending bodies and they're just trying to be helpful and trying to make sure that we are consistent and that we're following. All the rules and there's a, there's a lot to track. So we've put together a lot of checklists and we've submitted these to the different agencies and um. You don't have to take every comment you get to necessarily include it. You can, you know, change it to fit the city or you can say. You know, we don't wanna include that. Um so you have some flexibility to tailor it. How you like. That's what's nice, but um to some degree, certain things are less negotiable. Yeah, so um. But any questions on, in the packet on any of the? Any of the language or any pages or any suggestions?
You you said zoning is next. That public hearing proposed in one meeting?
Zoinks.
Uh correct. So we're gonna, that'll be through the public hearing. Yep.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then recommend, like, are we, a motion after that?
We, we left it open for both. So if it's a large amount of people coming and speaking, we left a number of them to have a separate meeting for you guys to separately discuss and make a recommendation. But if you have.
I'll just.
Three people that have been speaking or ready to make a recommendation, since you had two separate introductions, you are able to make a recommendation at the same meeting. I don't know that we have anything else really scheduled at the same, on the agenda at the same time as that public hearing. So it just depends on the time.
It depends how much, how much can we come back in a few weeks?
Exactly.
I gotta do some public hearing and be done.
Exactly, right. So it just depends on how many changes you guys want, what you wanna see and that kind of thing. So we left a number of another meeting after the public hearing for the recommendation.
So yeah, the reason I bring that up for you guys, just, yeah, we'll tie it. Uh it's gonna be a whole group before we really make a decision on this, essentially. So.
Yeah, I don't think we're gonna have.
Yeah.
Well, we did tell them.
So, so the, the, their formal vote will be in October, but we will have the draft letter. At the public hearing. So we'll have, I mean, we'll know what their comments are by the public hearing, even if they haven't voted on the letter. So I, I have a feeling we'll know. Their comments, everyone's comments all by the public hearing time, so.
It's gonna come right out.
It is coming up.
Yeah. Yeah, between now and September uh eighteen, if you have time to read and think and email and call us if you'd like. On both, and that's why Rebecca sent both of them to you, my name's too, because it's a lot to read. Um. Language capacity, which is rec, is in our packet here in references, is a good thing too, to just refresh your memory on, but. Yeah, and a lot of work put into it to date. So this is just. And again, really the element is broad and. To begin to under the code.
So is this just an introduction or is it provide feedback?
This is. Yeah.
We actually want me back because we, even though we're gonna put an advertisement out, any feedback we give us can include. An update from where we put the public draft out, because your draft is technically a planning commission draft and the draft is set out for comments. But any comments you make now for edits can be edited and updated prior to the public hearing draft, I guess, is what you could say. And even though the draft is out. And on the website, you know, but yes, and we, we've got our red line document ready to take our comments and corrections and.
Open right now.
Pictures and um. Whatnot.
Um okay, so I have a comment uh for the inventory and analysis section. I think. The key takeaways of the housing needs assessment, we wasn't taking directly from the actual housing needs assessment, um.
Correct.
Itself, so it's copying and pasting. Uh to me, it just, it seems a little bit redundant and unnecessary about it. Because we have, like for example, the land capacity analysis, land use capacity, right? You're not copying and pasting stats from that throughout this, but you say it's posted out in the housing part of the website. So. It's.
We were specifically told we needed to have that needs to be submitted in the document and not to reference it.
Okay.
I know.
Based on direction from our consultants and what we get through the process.
Okay.
Okay, um.
I tried, I think I tried to take it all out in my initial draft and when our consultant reviewed it said, okay, you need to put some of it in there. And reference the rest. I agreed with you and said, you're not gonna get it through the, you're not gonna go through the review committees. Cause even one of our comments, you'll see from, I think even P S R C or one of the other ones said. You need to even put more of your housing action plan into the document and not just reference it. So I think that's what you're getting, maybe put even less.
Um. Yeah, and I, I mean, beside the redundancy, of course, because all this information already exists in another.
Right.
Uh, you know, some of the key takeaways, and you know, this is me picking on that housing needs assessment. Um yeah, some statistics strike me as just odd things and key takeaways. You know, like uh. Something about the group of group age eighty five, it's eighty six percent renters.
Hmm.
Well, why is that a key takeaway? I mean, uh you know, for the entire assessment of. Group renters and age groups and yeah, I don't know. It's just little things like that, nifty things for, to me, it doesn't. Stand out as a key takeaway in regards to rental housing, you know, and um. And then, you know, like the wording just also, right, the housing needs, you know, it says the group age eighty five is eighty six percent renters. And then it says, and seventy two percent of those under thirty five years of age rent. That sentence is.
Would you rather say instead of the key takeaways, so some of the statistics from the housing needs assessment?
Yeah, we don't have to work. And if we do, we will, we will just.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
I think it's, I think it's interesting. Uh.
For the data.
Yeah. Like we had a consultant that we, like a year or so ago, and she talked about storytelling.
Mm-hmm.
Of, you know, what all these plans should be showing. And I think it's actually really interesting for people that are uh curious about what's, what is our housing capacity and where are the deficits that we have? It is really interesting to see that, you know, okay, all these eighty five year olds are renting. Are they renting at the, you know, in a. I think rental area, like I've seen or living community, or are they renting in individual houses? That data isn't shown here, but it is actually interesting for those that. Would like to dig up the deeper to data. Uh and just, and that's my personal opinion, but I do agree, that sentence is very. So I was like, wait, so ninety percent of those eighty five year olds are thirty five years old? If you have time to interpret it correctly. Old souls.
Yeah.
That's right.
Um. This is a general thing with uh comprehensive plan, verbiage, the policies and goals. And I, I think I thought about it more based off seeing the comments from uh P N S. Uh it just seems like a lot of the, the wording. I guess I don't know, I don't fully understand the goal that the comprehensive plan plays in the city's uh. The, the, like, development and. How strictly the, the plan influences. So like, so for example, there's a lot of the word encourage. And to me, that doesn't mean anything. It's not actionable. I don't know what encourage means. Like when you go to a developer and say. You, you have to say, we encourage you to do this. And then they said, okay, like, let us know. That, I mean, to me, a lot of this verbiage doesn't hold any, like, doesn't have any teeth. That's probably not the point.
Correct.
Right, um.
But that's why we, that's why you had the housing, kind of housing action plan, that has the actions.
Yeah.
Um and then you have your development standards that implement this. So your development standards have a T.
Yeah.
That are in, where you're getting the encouragement. So if, if something is encouraged, then you have the action is in the development standards. So you don't put development standards in your comp plan, that are your intermunicipal code. So if your T is in the municipal code, your goals are in your comp plan.
Yeah.
And we're, we're asked in the code to ensure that projects, even down to the project level or in code amendments and everything are consistent with the comp plan. So. You could call it out if something did not drive, saying this, this is inconsistent with policy X, like an adjustment needs to be made. Um so there's some flexibility, but generally it's more broad and. Yeah, that's why you don't use um recommend or whatever the other word in, in the code, because you would never get it.
You're shocked.
The, yeah, should or shall. It's like shall.
And I think, you know, part of this, especially because a lot of this uh housing stuff, it falls down going in housing. If I'm reading this as a citizen. I see this like, I don't know, sort of posturing at some degree, like, ah, this isn't even gonna help me, like. See, it just says they're gonna encourage people to do this. They're gonna encourage developers to, to live alone in housing. And it, I don't know, it doesn't inspire me. That, you know, like good things or things are actually going to happen. That's all.
I think that our, I think our, yeah, I think we are being required to have more actionable policies, they're calling it, the county. We have a five year check now instead of a ten. And so I think, like Rebecca was saying, that letter that we're gonna get from. Affordable Housing Committee, um of King County. Is going to be, they're gonna want a bit more detail than probably what we're showing in our policies. We're hoping it's not major updates and we have, we. Are not too far off the mark, but I think they're gonna.
Yeah, I think there, there is gonna be, I think, uh the one, one of the ones that I'm concerned about is, um it seemed like. It wasn't clear until now that they may have wanted us to do something regarding um. An analysis of policies before our comp plan's done. And we had, I mean, we didn't, because I didn't know we needed to. And so we put it in as a, something we're going to do. And so hoping they'll be like, okay, so that's one of the few that's like, okay, we will do this. Versus just encourage or we should. Um and so that there's things like that, that we had to put kind of a table of, okay, here's. We had to, we, we, one of the new things this time is we had to put a table of, here's the countywide planning policy, and you had to have an action. And what that action was. So it was like, okay, here's this policy and here's what we're doing. We're rezoning to meet that policy. Here's this policy. So there were actionable things that we have to do. And, and that's why this, you know, we have that section that, that um. The, 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 one of the new sections that says, here's all the things we are doing, the steps we're, that we, we are doing. To make changes to meet the code, which includes updating our zoning map, which includes changing the height. In I N U, which includes, all of these are actionable things that allow you to get more density, to bring more affordable housing. To do, you know, so there, it, it says, these are the actual steps we have to do. It's not just encourage or roll. These are the, the code changes we are making. Emergency housing is one of the things we have to do. The A D U things is one of the things we have to do. Um so then.
They're going to check on us in five years and say, how's it going?
Some of those are six months. So some of you of them have to do within six months of approval of our comp plan, and they're required to be done by.
Yeah.
July thirty first of next year. Um and some of them. The, the numbers, just the general status of where we're at on our growth targets is in five years.
Yeah, you might, you might like to see that crosswalk example and we'd be happy to send it to you. Or if anybody wants to, yeah. It's, I thought it was good, just as for background on.
Yeah, thanks. I just.
Yeah.
Um feel that.
Yeah.
Where it really stood and walked.
It's, 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 you know, even though we, we've updated every ten years, the truth is not, uh what you're gonna do in ten years, it's a twenty year. You know, growth, you know, vision, not, so you, it's sloppy.
Yeah, and it's, it collects the dust on the shelf no matter how glamorous you make it. Like you can, you can write all you want, but it's. You know, you're not gonna reference it on a weekly or daily basis, but it's. Required and it's meant to be there to just to keep us on.
Correct.
So.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Um.
You can update it annually. But you can only update it once a year. Not more than that.
It takes years to update it.
But if you're.
No, I know.
If, if there's a small update you want to make, you can't update it again. So if you, like, if you just wanted to change a policy next year. You wouldn't be able to do it an, another time. You only get, you're only allowed to update it, your comprehensive, a section of your comprehensive plan, once a year. Out, not the periodic, the, of course.
Then we aren't relaxed.
Like, you know, so we, that's why we use the document request process, because you have to take them all at the same time and do a single update if you get requests for comprehensive plan changes. Because if you didn't, if you didn't take all the requests and you got an application. Then you would have to wait a whole year because you would have already taken your one allowance to update your comprehensive plan.
And our documents are open right now.
Yes, till November fifteenth. Side doc.
I had a quick question on the affordable housing section, um age eighty, seventeen and fifteen through them.
Yes. Yes.
So I, I personally really like the second paragraph, uh, I guess first paragraph together with this quote. Um but it talks about the. The goal of seven hundred eighty two additional homes. It talks about the properties that have been rezoned um to help meet that. Uh goal of seven hundred eighty two additional homes. It talks about the properties that have been rezoned um to help meet that. But then I saw the zoning map in one of the previews, I know obviously. Next meeting, but also look like um there was a property that, there was a few properties that re reviewed um several months back. Uh and one of them was. Um like on a hill.
Yes.
Was like, let's see, it looks like those were on the map approved, like, so those, I I guess, do we get like confirmation from city council that those are going to be.
So.
Provided to inform or for me to.
So still draft.
Okay, still the draft.
So it's, it's still based on your initial recommendation. They have seen it.
Okay.
Mm hmm.
Um but.
So they haven't made a decision yet. So this, okay, so that's why it's.
They can't have any decision until you guys make your formal recommendation that goes in front of them.
Okay. Well, I really like this list. It is very helpful to see kind of like the the it's the action.
Yeah.
Yes.
And how, um I thought it was extremely helpful and interesting to see.
And I, and we did notice that list is in two places, so we did delete it after out of that section that you're looking at.
Okay, okay, well.
And um left it.
It was so good if you tried to put it in twice.
And and left it in the section that's on page twelve. And so we deleted another one you're looking at, but left it in in twelve, just so you know, it's not in two sections.
Uh okay. Yes.
I noticed that's very. Same thing, yeah.
Uh and some of those don't necessarily, like like you said, the single family that we added and high density, we added them the. Uh outside of the city don't really count towards your numbers, just ones in the outside of the city and ones in the city doesn't really help.
Yeah.
Our our counts necessarily for the lower income units.
Yeah, by um then the second one, which is a second character. Or second, second section of this uh bulleted list is happening in the page thirteen. Um I have always had a problem with the original zoning. For the uh income housing target see, like you see this deficit, but it's like, what's the city to address that deficit? It's like, right now, the room's view is like, oh, well, we're just gonna get these big. Million dollar homes. Uh and that's just gonna be the the increase. This map paired with us, uh this this chart paired with that kind of bulleted list. I think that is a just beautiful uh showing like what is this city doing, what's the city activating? The land that we have to meet our housing goals. So John, one of the sections, uh that's it. So I guess if you see that, well, it's nice. Uh yeah, you go.
Yeah, that's that's the need of it, yeah.
Okay, can you have other questions from commissioners? Comments? Alright, then we've reclosed this part of the agenda. Next is item number seven adjournment. So. We are adjourned at seven twenty three P M.
Okay.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you staff for giving that. Yeah, I appreciate your involvement there.
Yeah.
Pass with your. That's gorgeous, running right away. So.